Three. Uh, this is Chair Bennett. I would like to call the order of the March twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two special meeting of the Hillsborough Planning Commission. Mr. Cooper, would you please call the roll?
Give him just one second.
All right. Um, thank you. President Bennett.
Here.
Vice President Kavulia. Commissioner Air.
Here.
Commissioner Grillo.
Here.
Commissioner Schiller.
Here.
Commissioner Thrall Nash.
Here.
And Commissioner Uzmani, I just spoke to and will not be available tonight.
We have a corn present, so we will proceed with our, albeit, brief agenda tonight. The Planning Commission is placing emphasis on effectively addressing the issues in which we are engaged in a respectful and timely manner. We ask all parties to hearings and administrative matters during our meetings to assist us with this emphasis by participating in a direct and relevant testimony and comments. Of course, there are no opportunities for either public or participant testimony or comment commentary tonight, given the limited nature of this hearing. This is our continued hearing on appeal zero-zero-one dash twenty-two, the second and main commons project. The applicant is Travis Henry of Henry Point Development. The appellants are Marlis Carter, Dana Carter, Yvonne Dehart, Dirk Knudsen, and Jeff Nelson. The legal description of the property, which is the subject of the application, are tax lots sixty-eight-hundred, sixty-nine-hundred, seven-thousand, seventy-one-hundred, seventy-two-hundred, and seventy-three-hundred on Washington County Assessor's Tax Map one and two dash thirty-one CC. The request is, uh, this is a continuance of the February twenty-three, two thousand twenty-two initial hearing on this application. The Planning Commission, uh, meeting will only be for Planning Commission to review and consider additional testimony and evidence and responses that were previously submitted by participants to this proceeding. We will consider an appeal of the Planning Director's approval of a development review application in case file number DR dash zero fifty-eight dash twenty-one for the conversion of a previous bank into four spaces proposed for eating and drinking establishments located in the station community commercial downtown zone. Staff is requesting that the Planning Commission consider an order upholding the Planning Director's approval. Order number eighty-three sixty-three is available for consideration. Rachel Marble was our staff member in this proceeding. I will now ask the city attorney Chad Jacobs to go over the legal instructions in sequence for this this evening's meeting. Mr. Jacobs, it's all yours.
Thank you, Chair Bennett. Again, members of the commission, for the record, Chad Jacobs from the city attorney's office. As just explained by Chair Bennett, this is a continuation of the hearing that began on February twenty-third. As you may recall, on February twenty-third, the appellants requested that the commission keep the record open, which was done to allow them and others, whoever wanted to, to submit new testimony into the record, uh, which they did. Um, and then it also provided an opportunity for anyone to respond to that new testimony and then finally provided uh, an opportunity for the appellant to have, uh, or for the applicant, I'm sorry, to have a final response. At this point in time, we've received all the testimony that you're going to receive related to this matter. So we're at the point in the public hearing process where you now have an opportunity for staff to sort of summarize everything and give a staff report, and you an opportunity to ask questions of staff. After that point in time, we will have a motion for you to close the public hearing and then move towards your deliberation stage. At that point in time, we'll have a request to motion from you all as to what you want to do with this matter, allow you to deliberate and then make a final decision. As you may recall, we are, uh, having this special meeting tonight in order to comply with the hundred-and-twenty-day rule requirement. So we are requesting that you reach a decision tonight so we can issue the final decision tomorrow. Uh, that's where how we're going to proceed this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, and if you don't have any questions, we'll move into the stage of the hearing where you get the final staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Uh, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Jacobs before we proceed with the staff report? I'm seeing none. So Ms. Marble, would you please proceed with the staff report?
Good evening, commissioners. For the record, Rachel Marble, planner with the Community Development Department. I, um, am going to give a brief, um, recap of the, um, staff report. Um, and I'm not intending to cover the entirety of the staff report that I gave you at the last hearing, although I'm happy to answer any questions you have at the end to re-clarify information that I gave you at the previous hearing. So following, as Chad, uh, mentioned, following the hearing on February twenty-third, the appellants requested that the record be held open and had seven days to submit additional testimony. That testimony was included to you in a staff report. Um, and no, um, I'll clarify a few points based on that additional testimony that was submitted. Um, however, uh, most of that testimony was re-highlighting and clarifying points that were originally made in the appellants filing. Uh, following that seven days, the applicant and the Hillsborough Fire Chief both took the opportunity to respond to that testimony in the preceding seven days. And then following that period, um, the applicant waived their right to a final legal argument uh, in writing, which I've also attached as they responded during the, uh, preceding seven days. So I'd like to make a few clarifications about some of the additional testimony and responses that were submitted. Firstly, just want to re-highlight that there is no code requirement in the downtown planned district for southeast Fork Lane, which is considered a potential alley to be extended to southeast Second Avenue. Nor is there a requirement by the fire department to extend that alley for fire access, um, the building. As stated by the fire chief in his response, met all of the current fire access requirements for the current proposed development during the review of the application. Secondly, I just want to re-highlight that the correct tax lots, including tax lots sixty-eight-hundred, sixty-nine-hundred, seven-thousand, seventy-one-hundred, seventy-two-hundred, and seventy-three-hundred have been referenced consistently and correctly in the public notice for the original development review and the notice of the decision for the development review and in any staff reports that have been published on both the, uh, original appeal and then on the appeal hearing and then on tonight's, um, staff report. And lastly, just to re-highlight that the two tax lots south of this development, which currently have an existing parking lot, are not a part of the current development review and any future phase of development on those two tax lots would be required to submit a separate development review application during which time it would be reviewed for all, um, necessary, um, code requirements, including fire access, um, at that time for whatever is being proposed on those two tax lots. Uh, and it would be reviewed the same as any development, uh, that is coming into the city. Um, that's all I have for you this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Marble. Uh, do commissioners have any questions for Ms. Marble? I can't see everybody at one time, so I'm gonna scroll back and forth here. Uh, I'm not seeing anyone raising their hands. So no questions for staff? Do I have a motion from the Planning Commission to close the public hearing?
I'll move that we close the public hearing.
And do I have a second to that motion?
Okay.
I have a motion from, from Commissioner Grillo to close the public hearing, seconded by Commissioner Kavulia. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. Does anyone want to abstain? Looks like we have a unanimous motion to close the public hearing. Now's the time for the Plan Commission deliberations. Who would like to start out this evening?
I'll go for it.
Thank you, Commissioners Thrall Nash.
Get this party started. Um, so in my brain, I'm taking each of these objections that the appellants have to this, um, decision in turn. The first is the exist, the, this, the concern about whether or not this is an existing building or a new building, new well, would qualify as a new building. And since the footprint of the building isn't going to change, nor is the location of anything attached to the building going to change, to me, that clearly means it's an existing building. So that doesn't, um, I'm not convinced by their arguments that this would need to be a new, uh, considered a new building. Um, and I was really glad to see the fire chief, um, write his letter and the new information that we had this week because it really helped clarify for me, um, um, what the, the fire issues. And from what he has stated, um, I understand the appellants' concern for fire safety. Obviously, everybody's very aware of fire safety at this moment downtown. Um, but not only does it not appear that, it doesn't appear to me that there's an illegal way to claim that that, the, the, for the easement, or not really easement, but, but, um, condition that we would place that there would be a fire access lane, but there, it's not going to, even if we decided to do that, it doesn't appear that it would solve the problem because there's existing, there's existing, um, electrical lines that are in the way. It sounds like the, for, it sounds like the fire chief had said in his letter that there wouldn't, they wouldn't be putting fire equipment right there anyway if there was an issue because they don't stage right there. So that letter really helped clarify for me, but there's really no solution to the fire issue, um, via any route the appellants have, have requested. Um, and in terms of, is it an alley, is it not an alley? My understanding of our role here is that we are meant to evaluate whether or not in the, the Planning Director applied the current code, and the current code calls it a potential alley. And so I don't see any role for us in saying, no, it's not. And that you need, and that needs to be called an alley and hence other things need to be triggered. So those are my three thoughts about this process. So I would be inclined to uphold the Planning Director's, um, decision.
Thank you, Commissioner Thrall Nash. Uh, who's next?
I would have to agree. Um, while I understand the appellants' concerns, I think that, just like, um, Commissioner Thrall Nash just stated, none of the, this development does not change or impact those concerns, um, regardless of taking place. So I would also have to stand in favor of approving.
Thank you, Commissioner Schiller.
Yeah, I do agree with my fellow commissioners, uh, on the merits, uh, I do not see any reason to, uh, go against the Plan Director's, uh, consent to move forward with the project. None of the issues are raised, changed, uh, I mean, the definition of a new building, what is an existing, it is an existing facility and issues raised about other way as well as a fire. I'm not really, nothing changes with, uh, with the project. I don't think the project makes, makes it any worse than it is today. So, uh, I'll be watching to move the project forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Kavulia. Other commissioners? Commissioner Air, any, uh, thoughts from, from your camp there?
Uh, I was looking forward to the fire commissioners', uh, remarks as a guide to this applicant. And, uh, it was very clear that, um, it, the, the current, the new, the existing building's structure would not change anything, um, legally for fire, uh, access. And the existing versus new, new building definitions, uh, show that it's an existing building. And, uh, so I'm inclined to, uh, approve the project.
Thank you, Commissioner Air. Commissioner Grillo, I'm sure you had some thoughts on this.
Well, I share, uh, many of the thoughts that the other planning commissioners. Uh, I was sitting back, uh, yesterday thinking about this case uh, from both angles, and I, what struck me is, is that what we have here is somebody who is, uh, renovating a, an existing structure. Uh, I don't think that the appealing party has made the case that it's a, that there's a, a new building or a new addition on the case. Um, I don't think the evidence and the record supports that. Um, but, uh, what struck me is that there's nothing really out in the area other than the, uh, uh, drive-through being enclosed. And really, the only change that's really occurring is that the, uh, other parties in question won't be able to drive through the drive-through, which was stated at the previous meeting. And I, I don't find that that to be a sufficient argument, um, to to uphold the appeal. Um, I think that raises a larger question, which I think is outside the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission as to who has access over whose property in this super block. And, uh, my personal opinion is I think that that should be deferred to greater minds, certainly than myself, um, on that issue. Uh, I also would agree with the Planning Commission that, uh, the, the March ninth letter from the, the chief, uh, was very helpful. It's clear that he has indicated that the supplemental met the minimum requirements for fire department access. So although there was a lot of conversation in the public hearing about what's fire access, who has fire access and whatever, um, at least from my standpoint, I found the fire chief's point very persuasive. Um, the other thing that Commissioner Thrall Nash pointed to, which I thought was very interesting, was, um, even if there wasn't an extension of, uh, part of the alley or the second, uh, that appears to be in no way, shape, or form according to the fire chase argument that he would be driving any fire apparatus down that alley, uh, in any way, shape, or form, depending on the, the type of fire and not the least of which was, uh, the concern for safety of the firemen, uh, for the overhead utility. So, um, was, which was something that we didn't have a lot of conversation about, but I think that's fairly persuasive, uh, quite frankly. Uh, and although we have, again, a lot of conversation about what constitutes fire access, fire safety, uh, I think the fire chief's letter, uh, in the absence of any other evidence, I think is persuasive over the arguments that the appellants had. Um, I'm inclined to uphold the Plan Director's, uh, decision, and, and I will make one sidebar. There seems to be a lot of other conversation and other topics coming into play in this appeal. Uh, all of which have nothing to do with what the Planning Commission, uh, can deal with. Um, uh, I don't think we need to have a position on what the, uh, redevelopment or Economic Development Council does or doesn't lend money to. Um, I don't think we're in a position to talk in depth about what the Hillsborough Way is. Uh, I don't, I think that's outside of the, of the, uh, the wheelhouse for the Planning Commission, Chair Bennett. And I think that, uh, what I'm left with is there's a additional public information conversation that needs to be held outside of this appeal, uh, with the balance of the property owners, uh, leases, whatever you wish to call them, in this super block. Um, that this planning commission is not the form to have that, quite frankly. Um, but I think there's a need for that out there. But having said that, uh, clearly, the staff, Ms. Marble, and the fire chief have extended themselves multiple times, and I think we need to acknowledge that the city has reached out, has tried to explain, much of this, uh, what's going on. Uh, that's unfortunate that, and that kind of goes back to the theory that I've always had, is that any time you're trying to teach somebody something at a public hearing, that's not the right time. Uh, education in terminology, education in fire apparatus, education in what's a limited land use decision. Uh, and lastly, I would say that, um, at least from my perspective, um, I do not think it's appropriate for people to come to a public forum in a public hearing as this is and, and, and indicate, as what I heard at the last planning commission, that this mechanism is being used to leverage another property owner. I think that's inappropriate. Um, and it's not anything that I can deal with. Uh, and I hope the rest of the planning commission would agree with me, but the bottom line for me is, um, I'm inclined to uphold the Plan Director's decision. Chair Bennett, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Grill. Uh, very well thought-out comments by everybody tonight. Um, it's clear to me at least that, uh, the arguments that have been made by the appellants in this case have been listened to by all of the commission members and carefully thought about. Um, I guess I want to say a couple of prefatory, make a couple of prefatory comments, um, before I kind of go through my analysis of the issues. But first is that, um, I'm very sensitive to the safety and fire issues that the appellants have raised. Um, you know, we've had a recent fire in downtown Hillsborough, and, and that just heightens the, um, the issue, uh, about, about how do we fight fires in downtown Hillsborough and, and how do we keep people who are in those buildings safe? And how do we keep our firefighters safe? And, and how do we do the best we can to preserve, uh, a downtown that's well over a hundred years in the making? So the concerns that have been raised certainly have, I don't think, fallen on deaf ears with this commission. I think, you know, they're serious concerns. Having said that, who, the sandbox inside which we play is limited by what the code says. And, uh, we can only look to the code to, uh, size up this application and size up the, the, the appeal. And, uh, what happens outside the code is not within our jurisdiction. Um, some concerns, concerns have been raised that, uh, there are mistakes in the code based upon historical documents and, um, the time for addressing those mistakes is not in these quasi-judicial proceedings. Uh, the time for dealing with those kinds of arguments is in a legislative context. Um, and we're not in that context here. We, as a planning commission, have to take the code as it's given to us, and we have an obligation to implement it whether we agree with it or not. Um, so, so having said that, kind of going, uh, the, the couple of easy, easy issues, I think, the tax lot descriptions. It's very clear, both in the director's decision and the staff reports, that the description of the tax lots, which are the subject of the application, is correct. So, um, and there's been no evidence provided that, um, that anyone was truly confused, um, by the fact that the original application included a couple of, uh, other tax lot numbers. Um, so to the extent that there was any prejudice there, I, I think the ability for people to, uh, see what the notice of decision said in terms of how the, the property was described and have an opportunity to participate in this proceeding and voice their views, um, correct whatever minor, minor technical error may have, um, may exist with regard to the tax lot. So I'm not concerned about that. Um, with regard to the issue of the existing versus new building, I think our code is quite clear that this is, this is a modification of an existing building. Um, I could see a scenario that is present here where if someone were trying to, uh, you know, leave six feet of a wall of an old building up in order to avoid streetscape standards that are in the, in the, in the new code, um, I could see that kind of argument being made that that's not an existing building, but that's not what we're, we're dealing with here. Um, we have an applicant that's taking an existing building, working with the footprint of that existing building and making modifications to that building to, to, uh, implement an adaptive reuse that, quite frankly, is consistent with what the station community, uh, code, um, is looking to accomplish in downtown Hillsborough. I think the big question is the alley question, and, and the staff is, has analyzed CDC Section twelve, that sixty-one, that three-hundred B. And, uh, and I agree with the way the staff has sized that up. Um, they're basically saying that this project isn't adjacent to an existing alley. And that's the very, you know, s- specific language in our, in our code. Um, the code does indicate that, uh, Fork Lane is a potential alley, but that's, it's, the code says adjacent to any existing or vacated alley. And so it's not adjacent to an existing alley, um, per the language of our code. And, um, I think all of the other arguments relating to the size of the alley, the width of the alley, whether the alley is safe for, for firefighting vehicles, um, they're a bit on the, you know, in the category of red herrings. They're just, the, they're, uh, there are concerns that have been raised that are policy concerns. They're not concerns that are in front of us based on the language of our code. Um, I like Commissioner Grillo and Commissioner Thrall Nash and uh, persuaded by the letter that the city has received from, um, Fire Chief Downey that talks about, uh, Fork Lane and, and, I mean, he's, the letter says, quote, "It would be inconsistent with firefighting tactics to drive a fire apparatus down a twenty-foot dead-end alley directly adjacent to the buildings constructed at right-of-way and on which overhead utilities further limit the use of the alley for fire access." Um, what I read that to say is that even if that alley were extended through there, um, it wouldn't be used because it wouldn't be an appropriate, um, means of fighting a fire in those buildings. I unfortunately, for, for the applicants, don't feel that our code, um, requires this applicant to provide an avenue of safety for the appellants that isn't provided, um, in our regulations. Uh, while it would be awesome if there were a great big wide way for a fire truck to get back in there to fight a fire, um, that's not what our code requires. And, um, so, uh, while I'm sympathetic to the risks that are, uh, that those property owners have to deal with, um, like, like I said earlier, we're confined by what our code requires, not what we maybe would like I said earlier, we're confined by what our code requires, not what we maybe would require in our heart. So I, I think with that, it's pretty obviously, obvious that I am supportive of the decision that the planning director made here. I'm not supportive of, of upholding the appeal. And that's the way I would look at this. So does, did any of the other commissioners have comments before I entertain a motion on the appeal? I'm seeing none. So having said that, do we have a final motion on appeal 001-22, second in main commons, to reverse or affirm the planning director's decision on case file number DR-028-21?
So moved.
I have a first by Commissioner Air. Is there a second? A second by Commissioner Schiller. Just to clarify, the motion is to, is to is the motion to affirm the planning director's decision? I just want Commissioner Air, I want, just want to make clear that that's what your motion is.
Yes. It is to uphold the planning director's decision.
Okay. And is it also intended to be based on the staff report and the supplemental staff reports that we have received together with the arguments that have been made by the attorney for the applicant in support of that motion?
Yes.
Okay. So having heard a motion and a second to affirm the planning director's decision on case file number DR-028-21, based on the staff, the staff reports on file, and based upon the legal argument made by the attorney for the appellant, Mr. Cooper, will you please roll call this motion?
Yes, one moment, President Bennett. President Bennett.
Aye.
Vice President Kavulya?
Aye.
Commissioner Air?
Aye.
Commissioner Grillo?
Aye.
Commissioner Schiller?
Aye.
Commissioner Thral Nash?
Aye.
Commissioner Uzmani is absent.
The vote is 6-0 to affirm the planning director's decision on case file number DR-028-21 and to deny the appeal in case file number in appeal 001-22. That's it for that, that matter. I have only one other matter.
Excuse me, Senator Bennett. I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yes.
Before you move off of this matter, can I just confirm with staff that they don't need approval of, in the motion for a revised condition of approval number four, that was in the draft order from February 23rd, because that was not included in the motion that was just approved?
So, Chris or Rachel, do you want to provide? I, I certainly think we could redo the motion to ensure if that's required, Rachel?
Yes, the motion should include a revised condition of approval as requested in the staff report.
So, so I apologize if I didn't catch this earlier. If you recall, in your pocket from February 23rd, there was a draft order that staff had put together. And in that draft order, there was a revised condition of approval number four, which basically stated that prior to submittal for building permits, the applicant shall submit a lot consolidation application to the planning division for tax lots, 1N231CC06800, 6900, 7,071, 17200, compliance to be verified by the planning division. So if the commission is so inclined, I would ask that you just approve a new motion affirming the planning commissioner's decision with the revised condition approval number four, as stated in the draft order.
Mr. Jacob, is going to just ask for an amended order to include the modification condition of approval number four?
That would be fine.
Okay. So what I would do is entertain a motion to modify the order we just approved, which is order 8363 by modifying condition of approval number four as indicated in the staff report. Do I have a motion to that effect?
And President Bennett, just to, if I may interrupt with a point of order. For the audience, I want to make it clear that there is no public testimony or public comment this evening. This meeting was strictly for deliberation. We've got some people that are raising their hand, so I just wanted to make that clear as we're making this final motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. So I would entertain a motion to modify our approved motion to include a, a modification to conditional, condition of approval number four as indicated in the staff report.
So moved.
Do I have, I have a motion from Commissioner, do I have a second?
I will second you.
I have a motion from Commissioner Air, seconded by Commissioner Schiller, to modify the the previous motion to modify condition of approval number four as indicated in the staff report. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Anyone who's opposed, please say nay. Does anyone abstain? The motion carries. All right. So I think that disposes of the appeal. I have only one item. It's a, just, it's not even a housekeeping item. It's an informational item. All commissioners should have received via email this week from the Oregon Government Ethics Commission a request that you file an annual statement of economic interest. It's very easy to do. I filled mine out in less than five minutes, but it's required by the state when you're a member of a public commission like the planning commission. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Is there anyone who hasn't received that email from the government ethics commission? It's looking like everybody received it. Okay, just wanted to make sure that you pay attention to that. The deadline for filing that statement is April 15th. Does anyone else have anything for the good of the order? Hearing none, we'll adjourn this planning commission, special meeting of the planning commission at 6:41 PM. We'll see everyone tomorrow night for our regular meeting. Have a good night, a good day tomorrow. Thanks for all, everyone participating. Appreciate the time.